In connection with an application for a variance that's been filed by the Peanut Gallery LLC at 8 Hawthorne Street in Stockbridge. My understanding is this is an application for a variance pursuant to zoning bylaws 7.2.2, requesting a variance with respect to a structure on property at 8 Hawthorne Road. Let the record reflect that public notice of this hearing was published in the Berkshire Review on July 13, 2022, and again on July 20, 2022. The file also will reflect that notice via certified mail was sent to the following abutters: Steven M. Silver at 1 Oak Street, Lori Richmond at 3 Oak Street, Anne and Arthur Richmond at 19 Hawthorne Road, and Paul and Suzanne Hanau, H-A-N-A-U, also located 19 Hawthorne Road. And I guess without further ado, before we start, it might be helpful just for everyone to, for all of us on the board to introduce themselves, starting with you, John.
I'm John Heisen.
I'm Patricia Andrew.
Tom Schuler, Acting Chairman.
Catherine Chester.
Mark Mills.
Tim Murray.
And we should have one more, Miles Moffett, who was supposed to be participating remotely, but we don't see him, so we're going to proceed ahead. And I guess at this point, I would invite the applicant to make their presentation.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Brian Haran. I'm an attorney at Kane and Ibrida Myers, and I'm representing the applicant along with Elizabeth Goodman, who is here by Zoom. The applicant is seated here, Daniel Pincus of the Peanut Gallery. And I think it would be useful to look at the proposed site plan so you get a sense of this project. You know, the first point of inquiry is whether the soil conditions, topography, the shape of the lot are such that a variance is appropriate, and this is under sim 1.2.2 of the bylaw. And as you'll see, this project is really threading the needle between the various constraints on the property, which are very severe. So I'm going to ask, Mark, can you put that up? And I'll actually hand out a slightly larger version of the proposed site plan than you might have, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay.
Just make it.
We can share one here.
I've got a fair one, but it's hard to disentangle.
If you have it.
Thank you. So the proposed variance is with respect to the east side setback on the proposed house. So you'll see that north is in this direction. So this, the proposed house is here, and this is the east side of the house. The west side fronts the Stockbridge Bowl. This is the north side of the rear of the house, and then the front of the house here faces Hawthorne Road. So the existing structure is here, and the existing structure is conforming as to this setback, but nonconforming as to the west side setback. Essentially, the proposed project would flip that and create a conformance on the west side setback with a nonconforming on the east side. It would be 33 feet approximately from the east side property line as opposed to the 50 that's required under the bylaw. And really, the reason, the reason for this, primarily, there are various reasons, but the septic system on the property, as well as the existing structure, are in disrepair. For anyone to even consider building on this property, the septic system needs to be replaced. And the only site on the property that is appropriate for the septic system is this area here, the southern end of the property that Mark just pointed to. In order to build that septic system there, let me say that, there's no way to build that septic system given and keep the footprint of the existing house, because the septic system essentially needs to be long enough to sort of intrude on what is the existing footprint of the house, which means a new house needs to be constructed north of the existing footprint. The problem is, once you move the house north, you end up dealing with this line here, which is the lake and pond overlay district setback. The existing structure actually has a variance with respect to that. The proposed structure would maintain that LOPD setback, which I believe is 70 feet, 70.85 feet. So it's because of the shape of the property and the shape of the shoreline here, the LOPD setback is actually an arc. And so the existing property, the existing structure, is 70.85 feet from the high watermark, mean high watermark. And the proposed structure would maintain that distance. The proposed structure has already been permitted for, with respect to the LOPD setback, in addition to being permitted for the septic, for the rock removals, and
Conservation Commission.
And from the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
And historical conservation.
Sorry?
Historical conservation.
The historical conservation with respect to the rock removal.
Building.
That's the existing structure. So the proposal is to, again, move the building north, and in order to maintain the LOPD setback, move it to the east as compared with the existing structure. The nonconformity that would result is really minimal, given the topography of this property. The property slopes upward in this direction from west to east and from south to north, and there is a rock face here, an outcropping, so that this adjacent abutter to the east, the property is actually elevated. This, it's important to note that this abutter has submitted a letter, which I believe should be in your file, stating that he has no objection to this variance. Another important thing to note is that there are six, five or six, 1, 2, 3, 4, I believe, five or six other properties in the immediately adjacent area, all of which are nonconforming as to the side setbacks. So this project and the proposal to build somewhat within the 50-foot side setback on the east really would have no effect on the overall zoning in this area, because all of these homes along the shore here already have not conformed with respect to the side setbacks. And that's one of the critical criteria for the board to consider as you evaluate this project. There's no substantial detriment to the project. The distance from the lake would be maintained. Again, the abutter to the east has stated that he has no objection. Two other property owners in the area have also submitted letters, I understand, stating that they do not object. And really, this is a way to rebuild on this property where the house and the septic need to be replaced in a way that is responsible and that would have no substantial detriment on public interest or the interest protected by the zoning bylaw.
Just so I'm clear, I think I understand that what you're saying is that there's an existing nonconforming circumstance here with respect to the setback of the existing structure. Is that right?
That is right, on the west side.
On the west side.
Yeah, and that's an important point, is because of the nature of this property, the LOPD requirement, the setback requirements, the need to place the septic here.
Well, let's just stick with the point I made. I just want to make sure I understand this. So the existing house is nonconforming with respect to the 50-foot requirement on the east side?
It's not conforming, the existing house is not conforming on the west.
On the west side.
Lake faces.
And that's that 32.6 feet that I saw somewhere in your application?
Correct, correct. And so the new
No, let me finish, okay? I don't, you know, I don't move that quickly. So with respect to the other side, which would be what, the opposite side?
East side.
The east side, that's inconformity presently, correct, with the existing structure?
Correct.
All right, and that's what, 50 feet? What's that measurement, if you know?
50, 50 or 50.1, I believe.
51.8?
50.
I think it's 51.8.
51.85.
So it's over 50 feet. And what you want to do with this new, and what you're asking, and you submitted a design, which would basically mean that the nonconformity would be to the other side or the opposite side, and what is that measurement?
I'm sorry, what's your
32.6.
33.6.
33.6.
33.6.
It's a foot long.
All right. And by moving, or by, in this design, is there any nonconformity on the opposite side?
On the west side, no, there would be conforming with respect to the setback. It would be 50.1, that's the 50.1 I mentioned before.
Okay. Now, you've mentioned with respect to the issue of the placement of the septic system, and I think you indicated there's some sort of a retaining wall that's contemplated?
Yes, the retaining wall, and I think I need to move that to the other one. The retaining wall for the septic is shown here.
Okay, and how high is that?
I believe it's 7, 8 feet at the highest point, 7 feet here, and at 6 feet.
Okay, and is that, and that's a structure, correct?
I believe it is.
Okay, and that would be, and as a structure, would that be subject to the 50-foot setback requirement with respect to the front of the house?
I believe it, Mark.
That's our understanding of it, but we're looking, asking for, that's part of what we're asking for.
Well, I just want to understand what the circumstance is, and then we can talk about what you're asking for. So basically, what, if I understand correctly, you're looking for a variance because you, with respect to the placement of the new structure of the house on the property, correct?
We're looking for a variance to approve the project, which includes
All right, well, I'm just trying to break it down, because you're asking, and I think you told us that you're, that you want, you want a variance with respect to the setback requirement, at least on one side of the house for the new structure, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We need a variance, we're requesting a variance on the east side of the house. But you're right, we also are requesting a variance with respect to the retaining wall for the septic system. And again, there's no other place to build that septic system, so in order to build the new septic on the property, that variance really
And how far would the retaining wall be from the front?
10 feet.
Okay, and there's, is it a 50-foot furnace requirement?
50 feet.
Okay. So you're asking to be able to, for a variance, so that you can put this 8-foot retaining wall 10 feet in front of the property, and you're asking for a variance so that you can put a structure so that there's a nonconforming setback requirement on one side of the, on one side of the structure, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand it. And I don't mean to monopolize things, and I'm sure I opened up Florida, any of the other board members, if they have any questions.
My questions are about the process, the septic system research process. I am no expert at all, but I understand there are so many different types. Some can work in certain conditions, some can't, some can be in much smaller places than others, so I'm just wondering, if you could speak a little bit to that.
Sure, I may defer to Mark on that one, because I'm also no expert on septic systems.
So the septic system is where it is. It's the existing house, it's brown. The existing septic system is right here, and it's a leaching, leaching pit, basically, so it's nonconforming. It's going to be a nonconforming septic system. So we did test pits with Tri-Town Health Department in this area right here, right around the existing septic system. It's the only place on the parcel that has approximately 6 feet of soil. The rest of everything else is about 2 feet of soil, so you cannot, there's just no other place on the property to put a septic system. So under Title V, there's lots of septic designs out there, yes. But there would be no way, your 50-foot line is approximately right here, I can see it right here. So that's 50-foot setback. There would be no way to get the septic system outside of the 50-foot setback. So we're going to have to, and then what, part of the design process is that we have to have, a septic system has to be 4 feet above high groundwater. So out here, I believe, 34 inches was our high groundwater. So we designed this with, would be 4 feet, if it was 4 feet, this would be a 10-foot wall. So we reduced it by putting in what's called alternative technology. The alternative technology polishes the effluent, the septic tank, it replaces the septic tank. All your solids go in there, everything goes in. There's a recirculation system, and that polishes your effluent, so this state allows for a 2-foot reduction to the high groundwater. So that actually reduces this wall requirement right here by 2 feet. So this is probably a, I think it's about a $13,000 unit, as opposed to a septic tank, which is about $5,000 a unit, and it comes with maintenance and all that kind of stuff. And then septic trenches, you could make something here that would be a little bit different, but trenches are typically, your septic system's flat, so all the fluid is dispersed evenly, basically. And you have to go by the high point, which is this point here, for the separation to high groundwater. So by the time we get out here, this is sort of a profile, yeah, profile through the section here. So this trench is up above ground at this end, and here's the wall that would be required.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of filling in of the inside of that wall.
Lot of filling in that side.
And the outside of the wall, though, is, how, how is that structure, 8 feet?
So it's 8 feet at this point, reduces to 7, reduces to 2 at here.
So as you drive by, though, as you drive by or approach the house, there's an 8-foot wall 10 feet from the road.
So what we propose to mitigate that as much as we can is a stepped retaining wall. These are big block systems, they're about the size of this thing here, maybe a little bit bigger, of a sheet, and they put those in. And we have to do that so we don't have any tiebacks. When you do a retaining wall, usually you're putting a tieback so that the thing's not going to tip over. These are big blocks, so they sit by themselves gravity-wise. We can put impervious barrier around this thing, it's a rubber membrane. So when we designed this, we designed it as a stepped wall. It has a 2-foot, 16-foot setback, another 3-feet 16-inch setback, and it goes up to the top, and then we're proposing to plant this wall. So I believe, you know, we're proposing to put Virginia creeper on it, so this thing will be covered within a year. So you'll have a green wall, basically, hopefully not, that's the intent, to have a green wall. And we're proposing to plant at the base of it, on these shelves, and at the top. So does that answer your question? And the other constraint is, there's only 100 feet of frontage on this thing, there's an existing driveway here, and that's where we're proposing to access. It's the only place really that can be accessed. This is all a big outcrop, so it's about 8 to 10 feet tall, if you're standing at the road. And the septic system fits in here. If we didn't have the driveway, we could expand the, this should have a lot more side, it's called a side slope setback or requirement. But when we do the retaining walls, we request, you do it through a request for the Tri-Town Health Department. So this is approved for four-bedroom house through Tri-Town Health Department. And it's squeezing it in here.
So what I'm hearing is you've already downsized and upgraded, to the extent possible?
Yes.
Well, let me make sure I understand. The property, I take it, was purchased at some point by Peanut LLC?
It's Peanut Gallery LLC.
Or Peanut Gallery LLC. And when you purchased the property, did you have any kind of Title V analysis to see whether the septic system was functioning at the time that the property was purchased?
Yes. They asked me, it was basically, we determined that that was a septic test seepage pit, and that's, they're not allowed anymore, basically. So if you're going to do an upgrade, they're not going to allow you to use that. So you've got to do a septic system on the property.
How long ago did Peanut Gallery buy the property?
A year ago.
Okay, so it was a nonconforming septic at that time?
Yeah.
So right from the beginning, you knew you would have to do something with this?
Yes, and we tested. We tested throughout the property, and that was the only place that Mark would, and there was another, somebody from the town Stockbridge, inspecting the circulation.
So it failed Title V at the time of purchase?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. And when you purchased the property, were you aware that it failed Title V?
Yes. Unfortunately, there is no sewer access. The only, the only solution to build, to have a functioning house that meets the flood is to reconstruct the house, because the new septic system would go, would take the place of where the current house is, and then the house has to be setback from the septic system. So it pushes the whole property, it pushes the structure north, at which point it encroaches, and then it hits the LPOD setback, which forms an arc on the property. And that's what's pushing the house further east, and that's why that varies, that's why we're soliciting the variance from you.
And it sounds as though the land is such that the properties to the east don't really even see, has it really kind of blocked the view, because it's such a big outcrop?
It's such a small property, it's very, I don't know if you can tell on the elevation, there are elevation lines on it, but when you do the site visit next week, you'll come to appreciate just how very steeply sloped it is in two directions, both from south to north, coming from the road all the way up to the back of the property, and also from the lake going towards the east. So the house is sitting on a ledge that's sloped both south to north and west to east, which, again, presents an issue for installing a septic system there, because the septic system needs to be level, and the only place that's where that's suitable is on a slope, which is what requires, why we're forced to have the retaining wall.
So this section right through here, this is all about a 2:1, 2:1 slope all the way through here, and there's ledge outcrops through all of this. This is probably more than a 2:1 slope, it's almost a 1:1, because it's a ledge and it rises up. So all of this section, this section here, and all of this is a ledge outcrop.
Do you have to, are you going to build a foundation for this? Can you, can you dig in there?
So minimally, what we're, what we'd like to do is actually, we're trying to be as minimally intrusive on the property as possible, so we're, the proposed structure is going to be built on piers, and so it'll sit on top of the, on top of the rock rather than removing a lot of profit. There is going to be a minimal foundation, basically, for the main entry and a slab for the garage, but we have to see exactly how much needs to be removed at that point.
I'm working on that.
Yeah.
And it's, it would be some ledge removal, whatever method that is, maybe just hammering it out, but that would be in this area, because this is the tallest piece of land sitting up, and then maybe a little bit in the garage area, right here in the backside of that. There's about 2 feet of soil there, and the garage slab is about 3 feet below that, so there may be about sort of ledge removal to be done there. So there will be some ledge removal, that'll be done according to ledge removal standards.
So this is 0.91 acres, is that correct?
Yes.
And how large is the house with this square footage?
Of the
How?
Of the footprint?
Where the proposed house is. Yes.
27.80?
I have not got a lot.
It said proposed house is 27.84.
The existing house is also nonconforming as to lots of footprints.
Right, so we're conforming with 10% coverage, which is 3 houses, 775 feet.
So then the proposed house is more than double the existing set, correct?
How relevant is this, as a matter of all, that the existing house is going to be twice as much coverage, I mean, the new house be twice as much coverage as the existing house?
Well, I think the fact that there's an existing nonconforming means that the new house can be reconstructed on the property, notwithstanding the nonconformity of the new house.
So it's meeting the lot of coverage and the mass coverage, so it does meet the zoning bylaws as far as coverage is concerned. So the only thing we're looking for is for these setback distances.
Just, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because I think you, if I understand your presentation correctly, you explained to us that because of issues with the existing area where the septic pool or field, or whatever you want to call it, you can't use that anymore, is that the problem?
There's, the septic system takes up a certain amount of space, so that takes up that septic.
In order, you're right, in order, you can't necessarily do it on the map, in order to replace the septic system, it needs to be done. That septic system is going to be partly where the existing footprint of the existing structure is, and therefore cannot build strictly within the existing footprint while also replacing the septic system.
So the green, the green lines are the actual leaching trenches. We have to be, so here's the existing house to fit the septic system, and we're trying to balance all of this. So we pulled it away from the wall or the property line, I knew that was going to be an issue, there's no real alternative in design-wise for the septic system anyways. So we pulled that as far away from this to still fit a house. So these are the actual leaching trenches, and then there's a 20-foot setback to a foundation that's actually here, the overhang of the building. But there's a 20-foot setback to a full foundation of the building from a leaching trench.
So just so you're, so you're telling me that you have to have 20 feet between where the leaching field begins and the foundation of the house?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me just finish, all right? So where, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense for is, if you looked at the existing footprint, and obviously you can't superimpose the new structure on the existing footprint, or maybe you can, I'm just trying to get a sense for how much of the existing footprint could be utilized if you were to
That's the existing footprint of the house.
Okay.
It's more of a roundish
Okay, right. Well, how many square feet are in there, the existing house?
So I can work that out.
I don't care, so what is it?
What is the overlap, is that your question?
How many square feet is the existing house, I'm just curious? Living space?
992.
Oh, okay, all right. And the new house would have how many bathrooms?
Twice by bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
Bedrooms is designed, yeah.
Okay.
Four, it's designed for four bedrooms.
So you've got an existing footprint of the existing house, I take it was torn down at some point?
The existing house is not, has not been torn down.
What's that?
The existing house has not
It's still there?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's 992 square feet?
Yeah, I believe it's only one level.
One level, 992. And I guess what I'm trying to get a sense for, and maybe it's something I have to see physically, you, from what you're telling me, you can't have, the first point where you can begin leaching would be within 20 feet of the foundation, correct?
Correct.
physically, you, from what you're telling me, you can't have, the first point where you can begin leaching would be within 20 feet of the foundation, correct?
Correct.
And I guess I'm trying to get a sense for what, how much, would the new design of the septic system basically be such that the leaching field would consume that entire 992 square footage?
Well, it's not always, I mean, as you can see here.
Well, I can't see, that's why I'm trying to get a sense. I mean, I see a lot of, I see a lot of gray there, I'm just trying to get a sense.
Okay, my apologies.
No, it's not your fault, it's just, it's a complicated situation.
It consumes approximately 300 square feet of the existing house. So I just measured that out, 300 square feet is still free of the septic system setback.
And so, right, there is an overlap of the proposed footprint and the existing.
And so the, the existing footprint that we have is 992. And what's the proposed footprint?
Well, it's two floors, basement.
Three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five, is that what you said?
That's the.
The, the whole house, the whole new mess?
Yes, square footage.
So it was 20. You know, your building allotted.
Proposed coverage is 2784.
Correct. So this design basically moves the non-conformity from one side of the house to another.
Correct.
Now, if you, are you aware of any, any presidential or any circumstance where this were a town or a proposal like this where you basically are in essence changing the non-conformity for setback in the fashion that you'd like us to do? Are you aware of that? Ever being tested or being ruled upon by any court or any administrative body?
I'm, I'm not aware of any authority going one way or the other on that question. It is our position that there's no additional non-conformity here because there's already a non-conformity as to one side setback and we are not increasing substantially the degree of that non-conformity. We're simply moving it from one side to the other. The board of selectmen did not agree with us. They denied a special permit for this project. That's why we're here seeking a variance. But we, we are challenging that decision. And we believe on the law that we should prevail. But in the meantime, a variance would, would solve the problem because this board has the authority to grant a variance under 7.2.2, given the soil conditions, the topography, the, the shape of the lot. There's really no other way for, for a new house with new septic to be built on this lot in a way than anyone who owns it, whether it's the previous owner or now Daniel, the new owner. Whoever wants to improve this lot, which needs to be done, given the disrepair of the existing structure and the existing septic. This is really the only way, this type of approach that we are proposing. The house is already built, it's quite narrow. I, I think it's 18 feet or maybe slightly more than that.
It's only 22 feet.
Twenty, it's 20, right, correct. It's 22 feet. To make it narrower than that is really, is, 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 is 22 feet. So this is a, you know, a, a way to allow the property to be improved in the least intrusive manner possible. Where it has the authority given the venture of the, of the lot and the, and the conditions. And the non-conformity that would exist on the east side is relatively minimal and the butter on that side does not object to the project.
Anybody have any other questions?
I'm hoping a site visit will clarify a bunch of things.
Yeah, it's an unusual piece of property, I, you know, have to see it. Are there any, did any butters come? Is anybody in the audience that wants to speak?
At least.
Tom, why?
At least two of the butters are on the Zoom.
Do you want to hear from them now?
Yes, sure, that would be fine.
So Steven Silver is the east, is the butter on the east and I believe Larry Richmond is the butter on the north.
Yeah, I, I really, I have no objection, you know, to, you know, what he's proposing to construct this house. When you see the, that ledge, it, it's pretty well covered with, you know, on my side of the property with a lot of vegetation and there's a lot of trees that, you know, block any kind of view that I would have of his house. So I'm not really concerned about it.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Silver?
And again, to clarify, Mr. Silver is the, is the property that abuts the east side of this property.
Does, does anyone else have any comments that are here on Zoom? Somebody speak on.
Peter, you're on mute.
Sorry. This is Peter Strauss. I, I sent you a letter and I don't need, I suppose, to repeat all of it. I'm not in a butter, I live three houses away. But I pass the site often and I kayak on the lake at all times, all the time. And from my perspective, this would be a truly distinguished addition to the lake. I'll just put it that way. Very much better visually from the perspective of others who will be using the lake than many of the new houses that have been built around it. And my understanding is that all you are being asked to do is to approve the variance to which Mr. Silver has stated he has no objection. And for me, that ought to be dispositive.
Well, thank you for sharing that, sir. Anybody else have any other comments? Yes, sir.
Have you played the name?
Yes, sir. If you could just state your name for the record, sir?
My name is John Hart, I live in Malibu, Maine. To Mark and the attorney, what percentage of the lot exists there now? Is the house going to take up?
10%.
Pardon me?
10%.
And what is the zoning bylaws required?
10%.
Now, as I've been sitting here listening to this conversation, the septic system has a number of occasions been referred to as a structure. And I would suggest to the ZBA that they take into consideration 10% of coverage of the house. You think about the additional structure of the septic system and what percentage of the lot that would take up before you put a stamp on it. We, pardon me, I do not speak for the conservation commission, I speak for John Hart. So we approved this. We didn't get into the details of the zoning laws, we just got into the conservation commission issues. I'm, as a private citizen, kind of thinking, you could have a structure which is a septic system and another structure which is a house. And if you combine the square footage of the two, what percentage of the property is going to be taken up? And that's my only comment.
Can you respond to that? The wall of the septic system is the only thing that is, that would be considered a structure under stockage zoning regulations. It's only the, only the wall.
And just so we're clear, the wall is how high?
At the tallest point, eight feet, but it diminishes.
And, and how long, what's the, what's the distance or length of the wall? Curves around.
Yeah, it, it wraps around the septic. Scan here, silver.
Tom, does the height of the, of the wall come into play here?
So the, the wall, the eight feet section is approximately that right there. So that section is approximately 35 feet long. And then you have another section that's going from approximately eight or seven feet here to about two feet up here. And this is about 70 feet length. So you're maybe about 100 feet total length.
Is the wall essential to the operation of the septic system?
Yes.
If there's no wall, the concern would be collapse?
You can't, you can't build a vertical soil profile. And that's what we need to do. So it's the, we need to have a wall there to structurally support the soils that are building the septic system.
You made the comment that portions of the wall are eight feet high. Can you give me a sense for what percentage of this 100-foot in length structure is eight feet, six feet, four feet?
So as I just pointed out, this section right here would be approximately, that would be approximately eight feet tall. Diminishes as we go up into the ledge.
And that's about 35 feet long?
That's approximately 35 feet long.
Okay. And the other 65 feet, how high would that be?
It's diminishing from seven to eight feet to two feet in height. So up near the house, it's two feet high.
And in the application, you make the, under the, under the prong, enforcement would involve substantial hardship to the applicant. And you make this statement, the existing house and septic system are in disrepair and unsafe. Was that the condition that the house and the septic system were in when it was purchased a year ago?
Yeah, same condition, but that's really irrelevant, whether it's the, the old owner or the current owner who wants to rebuild the house and replace the septic. It's a legal matter, that makes no difference.
So the fact that your, your client purchased an existing house in disrepair and a septic system that was in disrepair and unsafe is irrelevant for the purposes of our evaluation?
I don't believe that anything wrong was done when he purchased the house. That any bylaw was violated. It is irrelevant from the standpoint of the zoning bylaw because the question is whether the, the soil conditions, the topography, the layout of the property are, are such that a variance is appropriated. As long as it would not affect generally the zoning district in which it was, in which it's located. And then, as we pointed out, it would, it would not affect the zoning district because all the houses in the area are non-conforming as to side setbacks.
So there's no way to not have the walls, you could like step the different soils that you're going to bring in back and have them stepped. So that they're higher back.
There's a certain distance that we have to hold from the side of the leaching, which is the green, those green dashes. This is the leaching area. And then there's a, there's a distance between what the end of the leaching trench is to the back of the wall. And then we are proposing to do a stepped wall.
And what is that, what is, are they concrete?
Yes, they're basically a precast concrete and they have different faces. The faces can be done as a split rock wall, it can be just an ugly concrete wall. We've discussed that with the owners and they, they're agreeable to get. The, these actual units here have a pocket built into them that you can plant in. So that's the intention is. We couldn't have just gone with a straight eight-foot wall. But we are trying to mask it by putting plantings in there. So that should, put a growing medium, so something grows on that wall, so you're not looking at a wall. You're looking at a green face.
So according to the building inspector, this, has he said anything about it being a structure other than the wall?
Say the, the septic system itself?
Yes.
Yeah, the septic system is, I'd be, be, discussing that with him. But the wall be the wall issue, the structure. So structure would be just this here. And then, and then building, obviously. So there is, there is, and you have different, different definitions of what is allowed in your setbacks. And I won't try to confuse you on it, but there's, it's like within the 50, within the 50-foot front setback, there's a six-foot wall requirement and a four-foot wall requirement. This, this is larger than any, either of those. And there's no way you'd be getting this down below, say, four feet anyways. Not with, not with Title V sanitary requirements.
Right, but you have to have the wall. And that's because the rain will come and wash it down, is?
No, no, it's, it's, it's. Getting into doing a Title V septic system design. It's, it's because the septic system is flat and this is, this is on a slope like this. And we have to have, the groundwater here is 32 inches, we have to be three feet, about two feet above that. Because we're using this technology.
Right.
So we have dropped it down two feet. But when you make the septic system to be like this, this is my trench, I have to hold this elevation back here above the high groundwater. So this, if this is two feet above high groundwater, this over here is going to be like four or five feet above high groundwater. But that septic system design, you can't really step them. There is, there is different technologies that you can step them, but this is a fairly small lot.
This is the only one that the health department approved?
This is what we proposed to them and they, they approved it. And I went through several designs to try and make this thing fit in here as best possible.
A six-foot wall wouldn't be sufficient?
No. The, the, this, this septic system is for four bedrooms, right? And I think you both made it clear that that's the key to the size of the septic system, as well as key to the, I guess, the number of bathrooms. Let's say it's key to the size of the septic system. In other words, here's how we're getting at it, is how many bedrooms are there in the existing house?
If there's two, it's good.
Okay. So if the, there were only two bedrooms in the new septic, then be considerably smaller.
Could be considerably smaller. Minimum design standard for Title V in Massachusetts is three bedrooms. You can do it with a restriction on a deed to go to less than that. So three bedrooms, it would reduce it, but you'd still have requirement for a tall wall within the 50-foot setback.
And now, now I heard you, is that legally relevant? What I just said?
I don't, I, I, well, my thing is, you'd still have a structure probably say six feet tall if you went down to a three-bedroom design. It might pull it back from the property line, so we have a temporary for a 10-foot setback distance. It might pull it back to 15 or 20 feet. It's still going to be pretty close to the front line.
I seem to recall that there is some law case law, maybe it's even in the ordinance, that any variance ought to be the minimum that is required in order to deal with the hardship. First, as a matter of law, I think that's correct. And if so, how does that apply to the question of whether a four-bedroom facility house would require a larger septic field than a three-bedroom house? Should we, or be allowed to say, okay, once you've been determined that you need a septic field and you need a variance, that you can have as many bedrooms as you want?
I don't think you're going to get as many bedrooms as you want because we only have limited space.
Okay, but on the whole.
If you're saying, are you saying, well, maybe you're looking at three bedrooms?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really just trying to understand what the applicable law is here. And I would suggest that the council, if, if you might, would be helpful to me at least if you could examine, I know there is some case law that talks about any variance ought to be the minimal that is required in order to meet the hardship.
any variance ought to be the minimum that is required in order to meet the hardship.
Well, Attorney Goodman might be able to speak to this as the specific cases. I think generally speaking, this board has the authority to grant a variance in order, the septic system, to replace the septic system is very expensive proposition, whether it's for a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom. That's, it, it's a hardship to ask or demand that the owner of the property make that investment, which is in the public interest. It's a matter of safety, health, to make that investment and arbitrarily restrict it to three bedrooms as opposed to four. I think this board has the authority to approve a four-bedroom house in, in this zoning district where four bedrooms is not accessible.
I think...
Oh, I'd like to just piggyback on your question, John. Putting aside the retaining wall issue, let's just say hypothetically you did reduce the size of the septic system as John was suggesting. How would that impact the necessary east side setback for a proposed building? Would that have any effect on that or, so it would only affect the size?
It's only the front setback that really you would be, and you'd still have to, we'd still be asking for a variance to the front setback for that retaining wall.
But that would be the only thing that... So, okay, and then one other question. If somewhere in your application, you say, "Anyone who makes this investment will want a house wider than 18 feet between exterior walls." Are you suggesting that if you did have an 18-foot wide house, that the only variance you would require would be with respect to the retaining wall and not the structure itself?
If you went to an 18-foot wide.
Right. It's just, just asking, yeah.
You still have to ask for a variance for that 10-foot, for that eight-foot wall and 10 feet back from the property line.
But not for, but not for the side setbacks, just for the...
One other question, I guess, and I understand that you, it sounds to me like you've looked at a variety of design options with respect to the septic system. What about a tight tank? Is that considered?
There's not, you cannot do a tight tank if you can put a septic system on the parcel.
Okay, well, isn't that sort of a chicken and the egg question? Based on the existing configuration, from what you're telling me, you can't put a septic system in, at least that would meet the kind of design criteria that apparently the tri-town people want. And the only way that you could do that would be to get approval from us or the special permit that you saw from the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yes.
So you could go, in the, given the present sort of state of play or the present condition, you could go put a tight tank there?
I don't, you, you still wouldn't, you still wouldn't be able to put a tight tank there. Even if you put a, outside, you still could put a tight tank.
And what?
DEP, the DEP state, who used to have jurisdiction on tight tanks, if you can put a septic system on there, as minimal as it has to be, you cannot put a tight tank.
Well, I, but you, but you can't put a septic system in there unless you get a variance from us, correct?
Yes, so...
So if you went to DEP and said, "This is the state of play here. I've got a failed septic system. I can't get a, I can't put a, a new septic system in given the constraints that we have with the existing town bylaws." What would, what would the powers that be or the regulatory people in the Commonwealth say to that?
They'd likely say, "You can't put a tight tank in." I mean, just, and I know you're not Monterey, you're Stockbridge. But Monterey had this issue with many septic systems around Lake Garfield for a long time. They're small lots. They're running into the same issues. You know, you have a 50-foot wide lot and you have to put a septic system in. They actually, and I'm not saying you can do this, you're Stockbridge, but they actually made a provision in their bylaws that they would allow for a septic system to be put in with retaining walls as required. They, they recognized this was, this was an issue. We've lots, and you've got lots of properties along Stockbridge Wall that have the same issue that are on the sewer. And we did pursue talking to the sewer commission, but I talked to Tony Kempetti. There's no plans to do that. They'd love to see it happen, but I think it's, you know, it's just a financial, it's not financially feasible for Dina Pinkus to do it because the towns are required, if you did a sewer, you'd have to go all the way past Bean Hill up to the crest of the hill, up to the first gravity sewer canal. So we did explore that. We went there and said, "Okay, how do we get rid of this wall?" But it's not practical. And there isn't a sewer. And that would be three or four years down the line, even if it was privately financed.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or...
I think there is a privately financed one, but I don't know quite how far it's going from Interlake and Cross Road up McInac Road. But I don't know how far to take it.
Yeah, not, not this section, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. This would have to be from, the closest sewer is actually a low-pressure sewer forced name right on the other side of the Causeway. But we can't tie into that for, for certain different combinations. But they, sewer-wise, they did look at Camp McInac, White Pines, we, the, and, you know, the community that these people had in putting a sewer pump station, getting it up and across. But it's nothing that's in the works. It's dependent discussion and it's not, it's not going to happen many times soon.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I guess at this point, I'm going to adjourn the meeting with the understanding that we're going to have a site inspection a week from Tuesday. I don't want to notice.
With you today.
With you today.
Which I think, did it say 5:30 or 4:45?
5:45.
So we'll be there at 5:45 at 8 Hawthorne a week from today. The intention after the site inspection would be to reconvene here at 7 o'clock and conclude the hearing and, and have a vote. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the presentation.